Okay. All right, thank you, everyone. If you weren't here this afternoon, just to let you know Debbie Donahue is away on vacation. And at least earlier and again tonight, she's been very earnest in dialing in, thanks to Starlink. So, thank you Debbie for being here. So I'll reconvene the Board of Supervisors, regular meeting for the 5th of May, 2025. One administrative note, we did not go into any kind of closed session following our afternoon meeting, so we don't have anything to discuss in that regard or to certify. With that, what I'd like to do is just briefly turn things over to Mr. Curry to set the stage for what is a relatively rare but now increasingly common occurrence where we bring in our colleagues from the Planning Commission to work with us jointly to finalize zoning ordinance changes, amendments, and so forth. And tonight, after kicking around for some time, a zoning ordinance amendment related to contractor yards, it seems like we are now very close and hopefully even tonight to adopting an amended zoning ordinance with respect to contractor yards. Before Mr. Curry jumps in, what I would like to do is to ask, Ms. Smith is the Chair of the Planning Commission, to call the Planning Commission to order, so we're both in session.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, all the members of the Planning Commission. Well, no, we're missing one.
You're the...
Oh, I'm seven. All the members of the Planning Commission are present and accounted for, thank you. So I'll call the Planning Commission to order. Thank you, Gary.
You should give yourself a lot more credit.
I can always count on you to keep me straight.
Yeah, me, myself, and I.
And I'll just add that Ms. Summers is joined us by Zoom in case we need any input from her. As Mr. Whitson noted, this ordinance amendment in the zoning ordinance for contractors' yards adds special requirements where there are no special requirements today for contractors' yards. And also drawing a distinction between a contractor's office shop yard, which is a larger, more intensive use, as compared to a small contracting business, which we both are in the current ordinance, and the small contracted business, which is intended to be on the same lot as a residence, there are several special requirements for that type of use today, but no special requirements for the more intensive use. This zoning ordinance amendment would add those special requirements. This is the third cycle of public hearings for an ordinance amendment here. The Board has shared with the public two earlier iterations, received input from the public, and made changes to the amendment to suit the conversation that has happened. The Planning Commission discussed this at a recent meeting and then made a minor tweak to some recommendations from the Board following the last public hearing, and then recommended to the Board to hold a joint public hearing so you could move through this efficiently, having already had several public hearings up till now. The ordinance amendment has been provided in my office for public review. It's been, this public hearing has been noticed in the local newspaper two weeks in a row in accordance with the state code, and the public has been notified of the meetings. The ordinance is ours, also posted on Board Docs, and I'm not going to go through it in detail like I have for the last two public hearings, but the bulk of the changes are included in Section P of 17066. It's a new letter paragraph in that section, adding P onto the earlier sections specifically for the contractor's office shop yard, including acreage requirements, setback requirements, various other things. So with that, unless there are questions, I'll be happy to...
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. So this is a public hearing, so I think what I'll do is go ahead and open the public hearing. We'll hear from the public to the extent there's interest in this. As mentioned, we've had prior public hearings on the same subject matter, so I don't expect a lot of additional comments, but anyone who wishes to speak during the public hearing, you will all be on a five-minute time limit. And as I explained this afternoon, unfortunately, my effort to be casual and flexible with regard to public speaking has been abused a bit recently, and so everyone will get exactly the same amount of time. It'll be five minutes, and if you hit the five-minute mark, I'll ask you to wrap it up within just a few seconds. So with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this ordinance amendment as it pertains to contractors' yards here in Rappahanna County. Anyone want to speak? Mr. Parrish from Stonewall Hawthorne District.
Chris Parrish, Stonewall Hawthorne. I have to admit, I haven't read the ordinance, I don't really know much about it, but I do know that our surrounding counties have a personal property tax for equipment, and if we're too lenient on this ordinance, we're going to end up with a lot of equipment coming in here from other counties just because we don't have a tax on it like they do. And also, I got the podium. We obviously are going to need a courthouse. You know, we're operating with this room, pretty much is it. And I know we've got elaborate plans for a courthouse, and I didn't know if it would make any sense to just build, you know, another discussion between, you know, one courthouse, one room, or two rooms, or this and that, which we may need in the future, but for now, it might be possible just to build a smaller, you know, just for our immediate needs and have the architect set it up to where we could add on to it later. If need be, we wouldn't have to, you know, write the bullet. It's a small county, we maybe don't need a great big courthouse. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else wish to speak? Yep. Karen Hunt from the Jackson District.
Thanks, so I guess I don't need to say that.
I thought I'd save you some time.
On the proposed contractor yard ordinance, there's been a lot of improvements, I think, the Planning Commission and the Board for hearing the public and taking the time to make the draft language better. I do have some continued concerns. We've removed the conservation districts and rural residential two from consideration, which makes good sense. I would ask folks to consider, is it appropriate to permit commercial contractor yards in the RR5 districts? With the smaller five-acre residential lots, could the ability to locate a contractor yard in an area with a higher concentration of smaller residential lots create the potential for division and friction between neighbors? Traffic management plans are currently proposed as discretionary with an application. Once a contractor yard is approved, if it expands over time, and most successful businesses want to grow, and subsequent issues or conflicts develop, does staff, the Planning Commission, and the Board have the ability to retroactively request a traffic management plan? If no traffic management plan was initially requested as part of the application process, how would any changes in traffic volume, traffic impediments, and sufficient passing widths that cause negative impacts be determined? With regards to lines 83 and 84, which is 11C, the current proposed language would allow contractor yards on both public and private roads, and we have a lot of private and smaller secondary roads in the county. While reference is made to a 50-foot right-of-way requirement for private roads, these right-of-ways can exist on paper but not in actuality in the field. There are many examples of this throughout the county, but the recent Ridge U Lane, ADU case comes to mind. A 50-foot right-of-way technically exists on paper, but that gravel road is mostly a one-to-one-and-a-half-lane-wide, winding, changes in topography, drainage ditches, culvert crossing, et cetera, and that is not atypical of roads that we have in this county. There are many private gravel roads that have no shared maintenance agreements. This scenario, in conjunction with a special exception use, can create community friction and divisions among neighbors, and I think as a county, we should be mindful of that and seek to preempt or minimize situations that precipitate the potential for this sort of community conflict. Should we be requiring contractor yards be located on state-maintained roads with minimum of, for example, 20-foot paved surface? I'm concerned that the inclusion of both the RR5 zoning and the private roads as eligible for contractor yard increase the likelihood of adverse impacts and conflicts and should be considered carefully. Also, will a site plan be a requirement? There's nothing that appears to specify setbacks from like a well, a septic drain field, a stream, a pond, or other environmentally sensitive area. We've had situations and other special use permits and special exceptions where a septic drain field was in a portion of a driveway, or a parking area, or encroaching into a floodplain. Should a large heavy equipment storage and use require more of a setback in certain circumstances? How would this be done? As currently proposed, I don't see where we are addressing lighting compliance with dark skies initiative. I could see how someone would want a contractor yard full of their equipment to be lit. Perhaps it might be a good idea to include language that references the lighting in our general requirements section. Chemical spills and lighting plans are at administrative discretion. Hazardous chemical use or storage is not mentioned. I understand the desire to move this forward, but it's important, and we want to get it right, and I'd ask that you please consider, maybe this could benefit from additional work here before it's ready for final consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Karen.
Anyone else here tonight at the meeting? Yeah, Anita Ramos from the Hampton District. Thank you. Yeah, you can still take the thunder back if you want.
Anita Ramos, Hampton District. I want to echo a few things that Ms. Karen has said, but in particular, private roads is a difficulty, and we've dealt with private roads that do not have full maintenance agreements. We've had a few, I believe, up in Chester Gap. We had one that, like, half the neighborhood was involved and the other half wasn't. Heavy equipment's going to tear things up a lot, so they should have to, not should, they must have a maintenance agreement if you're going to put anything on a private road like this. The other thing is site plans, and looked at a lot of site plans in my life in another world, and you'd be surprised where people have put their septic fields or their wells, and so I'd like a requirement that a full site plan be made, and if additional things are supposed to be put on the property, like, you know, for putting in a full bathroom or something like that, that we know where the septic field's going to be, we know where the well's going to be. A good point was made by Mr. Parrish about the fact that we could have lots of people coming here with their contractor yards. I've seen them really ruin a couple of places, so I hate to see a neighborhood messed up. So please do some more consideration about where these things can go. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room wish to speak? Mr. Kohler from the Jackson District.
Good evening. Rick Kohler, Jackson District. Some good comments have been made so far. I liked Mr. Parrish's thought that it never came to me about people shipping in equipment. That's something to think about. The road maintenance is a big one. I mean, I manage a road that I live on and share with people, and it's quite, it's a chore, and if you have somebody overburdening the road, it's very easy for it to just be a big mess, so, and people would be angry. You know, the five-acre zoning is meant to be a transition from the town to two-acre to five-acre to agricultural, the way it was designed, so it's something to think about as far as what hardship it might put on local owners. I liked the comment about the courthouse. I know you all have already made some decisions on this, and it's probably not going anywhere with this, but it is a huge undertaking, and it's going to be a lot of money, and right now, with the things the way they're going, we don't know what costs are going to be like soon, and it might be something to put off for a while until we know what it's really going to be. And Ms. Hunt had made some good comments about roads and access, and I think they're all good, well-taken points, so thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you. Yep, Ron McAllo from the Jackson District.
Ron McAllo, Jackson District. First, I would say that, and I've said this before, is that I tend to think this permitting process is anti-business in that contractors serve a purpose, a value to the people who live in the county, and particularly from the extent that contractors tend to charge mileage-wise, in that, you know, where they're coming from to your house, you get charged for that, so if they're not housed here, or they're housed in surrounding areas or whatever, the citizens have to pay extra to get those people to come here. So it's, you know, we shouldn't be discouraging contractors from placing their businesses in Rappahanna County. And the next thing is that the issue seems to center around appearance, in that contractors' yards are, you know, they've got equipment and whatever, and that this is unsightly, and it ruins the view shed or whatever. But I like to sort of compare farm use, which a lot of these contractors' yards will end up in agriculture areas, and contractors' yards, in that farms, they have storage buildings, they have lots of heavy equipment that they store around, they have equipment that breaks down, that they keep for parts and everything, and there's no restrictions on, you know, if you're doing farming, there's no restrictions. It's very similar with a contractor. He's got a storage building, he's got heavy equipment to store, he may have equipment that he needs to hold on to for parts or whatever, so it's sort of arbitrary towards the contractors, and they have to conform to these regulations that farmers who are doing to a certain extent essentially exactly the same thing don't have to. So I think you need to keep that in mind. What if a farmer is also a contractor, which can happen? They have to supplement their business or whatever. How does that get handled? Do they have to build separate buildings? Can they use their, you know, their barn for, you know, half agriculture and half business or whatever? How are we going to handle that? Because it could come up. What if a contractor comes in and buys a farm that has existing structures on it, which are, you know, barns or whatever, which are capable of holding their equipment, but they don't meet those setback requirements? How do we handle that? Another thing that can end up being an issue is we've got the setbacks, which sort of 200 feet from everything or whatever puts it in a certain spot. Now, on that particular piece of property, you know, the top of, yes, topographical situation is such that it's, it may have a stream running through that particular area. It may have route, rock outcroppings. We have those things all over the county. How is that going to be dealt with? Because for residential-type structures or whatever, they can apply for variance, and the PCA will sit down and look at it and make an adjustment. Are you going to allow the same thing for these contractors that are coming in? And if, you know, if we are, what's going to be the order of business in that, do they have to get the variance first, or do they have to get the permit first? And how's that going to work out? And we really ought to have these things worked out in advance because they are plausible as far as I'm concerned. Also, and it hasn't been dealt with in this ordinance, is that we have numerous unpermitted contractors' yards in the county at this point. Now, if someone who has one sells the property, is that going to remain grandfathered? Because they're grandfathered right now, but is it going to remain grandfathered? Or does the new owner, if they want to continue with that operation, are they going to have to apply for a permit? Because there is no permit that sort of holds over if they don't have one because they're there illegally, but how is that going to be handled? I think we need to look at that in advance. So these are just questions that I've come up with, and I hope you consider them when you're figuring this thing out, because it's not easy, I know that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? John Capioli from the Hampton District.
I think everybody would have been shocked if I didn't come up to speak. I have a question on what is on Board Docs. On Board Docs, there is a formula that says if you have 15 acres, you can have, just as an example, if you have 15 acres, you can have three acres of usable space. However, there is at the top of the document a statement that limits you to 20,000 square feet of outdoor storage. Which one are we voting with this evening? That's the first one. The second one, I've heard the people that came before me, and I agree with problems on private roads and narrow roads. My particular spot is the biggest road in the county, which is 211. I've got four lanes. I'm 900 feet back from the road. I have no water, I have no issues with any of the other things that have been brought up, so I'm hoping that that will go smooth. And last but not least, in the very beginning of this discussion, I wanted to see it addressed about equipment coming from outside of the county and just building a storage yard. I had brought up the issue of having contractors' yards where contractors live. So that way, that would prevent somebody like SW Rogers buying 100 acres and putting 25 acres' worth of equipment out here, which could happen. I can see it happening, because it would save a lot of money. They'd save more money to buy the piece of property and occupy it than it would be to pay Prince William or Lao. Other than that, once again, Ms. Smith, I thank you for leading this along with a number of members of the Planning Commission, but I'm picking out you as a thank you for leading this to this point, other than the one thing which was discussed at early meeting about the 20,000-square-foot limitation seeming to be small. I've got a garden that's almost 10,000 square feet. So let's see where this goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here tonight, before I turn to anyone online? Okay, and I think online, we have Debbie, so we'll make sure to include her in our discussion, and Ms. Summers, and I'm pretty sure I know who SDW is, and I don't think she will have any comments on the contractors' yard.
You should ask.
This is your opportunity to speak. Okay, I will close the public hearing. It's my wife. Thank you. Ms. Smith, I think it would make sense, and I, at the risk of beating a dead horse, just ask the members of the Planning Commission, including you, to raise any final concerns or points related to where we now stand on this draft ordinance revision, and I thank everyone for their service on the Planning Commission. I know it's no small ask to have you come out tonight in addition to normal Planning Commission meetings, so thank you.
So I thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. At this point, I would turn to the members of the Planning Commission for additional comments or concerns, if anyone has anything to add.
And if you could use a microphone, just so that we make sure we get any final comments on the record.
And Ms. Donahue and the others online can hear you.
Okay, great. Anyone on the Board of Supervisors have anything to add, any questions to ask?
I just want to walk through a few of the points that were brought up, points of concern.
Sure.
For the RR5, the minimum lot size shall be 10 acres. So I feel like we have adequately addressed the lot size concern. It can be an RR5 zoning, but the minimum acreage still must be 10 acres, however they accomplish that for the site. In terms of the vehicle traffic, to my mind, this has some of the most restrictive vehicle access language that we have crafted. Applicants shall include a traffic management plan upon request, indicating the numbers and types of vehicles normally using the site, and describing the existing road geometry, including surface treatment with horizontal and vertical curves along the traveled route between the site and near its primary highway. So we've really put the onus for proving that it is a safe site to access on the applicant, and that is appropriate. Proposed vehicle traffic should accommodate traffic in both directions, specific in that design, and that the private road, the private road right-of-way must be 50 feet wide. I hear some concerns about maintenance agreements, and I do think that that is a valid point, but it's my recollection that in the past, whenever maintenance agreements have been brought up, we handle that issue through general standards. And so that is a way to dispatch that concern without writing it into the ordinance language itself, and I do think that it's appropriate to continue to do so. I think we, I mean, I think the language for, in terms of chemical spills, site plans, concerns over toxic material storage, we were very specific in Item 8, that upon the request of the Administrator, Commission, or Board of Supervisors, applications shall include light, noise, vermin, dust, fumes, smoke, odors mitigation plans, as well as onsite fire suppression and onsite chemical spills emergency mitigation. I really think we've taken all the necessary precautions and the language for this ordinance. In terms of how to separate farm equipment from contractors' equipment, we've made it clear that what we're interested in counting is equipment pertinent to the business for which the application is being submitted. If you're doing something else that's a byright use on your property, we're not interested in that. I think there were a few other concerns brought up in the public hearing, but those are the major points that I recall, and I feel like we've negotiated most of those points skillfully, and at this point, I'm well satisfied with the language that we've crafted. I should say, this was not particularly important to me. I would never have picked to work on this.
Yeah.
This was a staff concern that the Board agreed on, and I think we started out with a lot of language and gradually whittled it down to be very concise, and rightfully so, and we want it to be user-friendly and not overly burdensome to the applicant.
Great, thank you, and I commend you and your fellow Planning Commission members for your command over the details and for exercising patience with us as we kick this back and forth.
I think we all know this was a lot of good teamwork between the Board and the Planning Commission.
Anyone else wish to comment on this?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the Planning Commission for doing this. You guys have been working on this forever, so thank you. If somebody wants to build a building and needs to get a permit, are they going to have to use the commercial lighting standards?
No, because right now, it's only in commercial and industrial-zoned land. However, that is an allowable condition, not a special exception.
Exactly, absolutely. So that could be, as you all usually...
That could change if that ordinance changes.
But because we're working on the dark skies thing, that's something we could also talk about. Second, Mr. Parrish brought up the machine and tools tax, which we do not do. I talked to the Commissioner of Revenue today, and people do it anyway. They're storing stuff here, and she'll call Culpepper and say, hey, they shouldn't be here. So that's currently going on. If we were going to administer something like that, there's a difference between the business licensure and machine and tools, and if we do machine and tools, that's taxing every machine and tool in the county, and that's a whole added layer of administrative stuff, which, that's a real deep discussion that involves a bunch of other different factors, but I don't think that it would, the vehicles don't apply, so whoever's going to do this and brings in vehicles, they're going to get taxed. They don't get to opt out of... They don't get to opt out of that part of the contractor yard.
And they don't get PPTRA.
That's right. And so, the only thing that they would be able to do would be like a log split, stuff that, it's on vehicle. And so, those are the ones that would go under the radar in terms of not getting taxed. In terms of the road standards, I agree with you. I think that the number eleven here is robust, and it allows the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors and then the County Administrator...
Zoning Administrator.
I mean, sorry, the zoning administrator, to really craft what they need to do to that specific thing. So, thank you all for working on that.
Great, thank you. Ms. Comer?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I really, I liked, you did start with a lot of words, and I liked the work that the Planning Commission and you did to make it more concise. I did take note of all of the questions during the public comment, and you answered them, you answered every single one of my whys, so I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
Great. There were a couple of small things that I heard during public comment, like, are site plans required? And yes, so in the use table, right over on the right, there's a site plan column, there's an X, as it's required. The Planning Commission, as they can do for any other, can choose to allow certain requirements of a site plan not to be included, like curb and gutter, if that's not appropriate. So, yes, a site plan is required. There was some confusion about the storage area and building area, because there's a handy tool attached that lets somebody know how much acreage of their property they could place allowable uses. This is very clear in the ordinance, that the total area used for outdoor storage in connection with this use shall not exceed twenty thousand square feet, period. And the total area used for structures used in connection with such use shall not exceed ten thousand square feet, period. Those are very strong requirements. The other table is just letting somebody know how flexible their site is relative to this. So, if they have outcrops, or streams, or whatever, they have some flexibility within the envelope that is set aside from the two-hundred-foot minimum yards on all sides. And lastly, Mr. Goff pointed out that we missed a comma in line sixty-seven after vermin, and so, if and when somebody decides to move approval of this ordinance, I would ask you to do it with a comma after vermin.
You don't want to read vermin fumes.
Yeah, right. I was going to say, or vermin smoke, vermin odors, maybe. Yeah, I thought it was an Oxford comma question, but it's two words before the end, so it's, we can't even, we don't have to have that argument. Yeah, I know what vermin fumes are.
It gets you into trouble.
Yeah, right.
Or get you out of it.
Yeah, and I think, I appreciate all of your comments, and all I would say is, the ultimate backstop is these are by special exception in any event, and we know, and so do our citizens know, that when you come before the Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors with a request for a special exception in a particular zoning district, it comes with a heavy burden placed on the applicant, so let's not forget that.
Can I just say one more thing? There was a comment that was made about which it was going to be. The table that was posted on board docs is just, is just an example of what it could be. It's twenty thousand square feet. It's twenty thousand square feet. So, the example that was online, where there's ten acre parcel, twenty-five acre parcel, is just showing you whatever geometrical issue you're dealing with with your lot size, this is how many acres you could potentially use for the contractor's yards. It doesn't mean that you can use all of it. It just means that in this, you know, if you've got a really weird shaped lot, you might not be able to do it at all, because it's just way too narrow and you wouldn't get the side, yeah, setbacks on the sides. So, that's what these tables are.
And then I do, I do want to mention the one other point that was brought up about if a business grows, which we hope businesses grow. I imagine it would be similar to the training range that was approved in Jackson District when they wanted to expand their events, their number of events. They would come back and submit an application requesting additional space.
Yeah, the ordinance on special exceptions is clear. It speaks to enlargement, and you cannot enlarge your use. You can come back and ask for a new permit that has an enlarged use. And if that new use doesn't fit within the confines of the ordinance, then no, you can't.
Yeah, and I think this all speaks to the fact that we have the luxury and the privilege in a county like ours to really, really control things the way that we want, to preserve Rappahannock County the way we want, and this speaks to that essential principle. Ms. Smith, I'll turn it over to you to see if one of your colleagues on the Planning Commission wants to put forward a motion, one way or the other, and this would be a roll call, though, just a reminder.
Sounds good. Yes, so we're looking for a recommendation for approval, if someone's inclined.
Could I make a quick comment?
Yes, please.
Please.
Another point to that last one about expansion, I think one of the practices that we've adopted, and I think we need to stay tuned to, is making sure that the descriptions in the application are part of the restrictions, because sometimes that's not a given, and that's one of my sort of favorite things to point out as we go. But with that in mind, I will move, at least on behalf of the Planning Commission, that we recommend approval of the ordinance as drafted.
Thank you, Mr. Light. And we have a second from Ms. Ritter.
And that'll be a roll call vote from the Planning Commission, then we'll pivot to us.
Is there any other discussion on this? All right, with that, it's a roll call vote. Mr. Sisk?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Ms. Ritter?
Aye.
Mr. Light?
Aye.
Mr. Shuland?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
And I also.
Thank you very much. And even though I wrote in big block letters right in front of my nose, Donahue, I failed to call him Ms. Donahue. So, Debbie, is there anything you want to add here before we...
Really, I really appreciate that.
Sorry about that.
The only question I have is the emergency mitigation plan. I'm very interested how fire and rescue finds out if a contractor yard, or any farm, really, has any hazardous materials, should there be a fire or a health issue, they would know going into that call ahead of time versus once they're in.
Yeah.
Well, so, if there are large businesses, they have to file reports. We have two of those. But for something like this, that might be a condition of a special exception, that the owner filed with the county annually, the chemicals on site, so they can be sent to the fire department, or...
Great.
Okay, I just don't want to forget that for the fear of our people getting hurt.
But it all can be mapped through our dispatch system and our GIS layers on the emergency services.
Probably so.
Yeah.
Definitely in CAD.
Okay, yeah, okay, great, thanks. If there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion to, some motion on this ordinance, and I'll just...
I'll make a motion.
So, remember, we need that comma.
Yes, sir, I was headed right in that direction. I would make a motion that we adopt the ordinance regarding contractor yard amendments with the addition of the comma after the word vermin.
That's an old time...
Vermin fumes will kill you, it turns out. This is not a finding.
No, it's true.
With the addition of a comma after the word vermin, and with that, with that change only, that's my motion.
Okay, a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Carney. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Many thanks to the Commissioners for coming out on a Monday night.
Yeah, and roll call vote, Ms. Comer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Carney?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
And I also thank you, and I'll allow you to adjourn your Planning Commission meeting.
And with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. A second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you all, have a great evening.
Thank you all.
Onward and upward, on to the next thing. Okay, that concludes the public hearing and vote on the zoning ordinance amendment related to contractor yards. We'll move on with our evening agenda, and at this time, we're going to open a general public comment, period. And again, the five-minute rule applies, and you, any member of the public or anyone online wishing to speak, just come to the microphone and podium, and you can speak on any topic you wish. Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak?
Mr. Shuland is a gentleman, you're going to be here all night.
Somebody start.
All right, Brian Shuland from Wakefield.
Brian Shuland, Wakefield. I don't get the opportunity to speak before the school board, but recently I got a letter, I guess it was during tax season, so I kind of glanced over it, making us aware of a security breach in whatever kind of online schooling stuff we do.
Power school.
Power school, and that my daughter's social security number may have been one of the ones that may or may not have been hacked, or whatever. And I just think it's very, very weak on the school board's part to accept a one-year LifeLock search on a thirteen-year-old child. It gets filed away with her birth date, her social security number, and her name, and they sit on it for eight years, until she's got assets to attack. That LifeLock thing's a joke for a thirteen-year-old. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Catherine Everett, and I am here to talk about country roads and the zoning requirement for country ends.
And Ms. Summers, you're in the Wakefield District.
I am in the Wakefield District, yeah, sorry.
Sorry, I was slow on the draw there.
Okay, yep. So, I'm the owner-operator of Chancellors Rock Farm, and I want to talk about the zoning regulation you're considering for requiring country ends to be accessible by a paved road. This would have a devastating impact on us, and I believe would be a mistake for the county as a whole. We are a working farm on seven hundred acres. We start at Jericho and continue onto North Pose Road. Jericho is partially paved, the other half of Jericho and North Pose is not. We have four additional houses on the property, aside from the one we live in. We use those houses for agritourism, for bringing people onto the property, for retreats, special events, et cetera. The farm is a working farm. We raise pigs, cattle, vegetables, flowers, herbs, but none of those revenue streams would support the farm without agritourism. And so, whilst we have a permit for six special events a year, we're hoping to come in front of the county for an expanded permit, and we'd love to pay more meal and lodging taxes. I'm happy to do so, but if this ordinance is passed, we would not be able to do that. And I just believe that the way gravel roads are in the county, it's very arbitrary, what's paved, what's not, and I would hate to be penalized for choosing to buy a property with structures on it that are perfectly suited for bringing more tourist revenue to the county for access. So, I just urge you to consider that, because it would really be harmful for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else? Ms. Grigsby?
She had one.
Go ahead, Anita. This is Anita Ramos from the Hampton District.
Ramos here again. Just wanted to tell you a little story of what happened. After the Planning Commission meeting at the fire department in Amosville, Ms. Hunt and I were standing around outside talking afterwards, and we saw a police car with the lights all on going Culpeper direction, I'll say. And suddenly, it pulled in and stopped on the other side of the road, and lo and behold, a car was coming down the road the wrong direction, and he stopped the guy. The guts of pulling out in front of somebody like that was amazing to me. We watched them, you know, the driver got out of the car after a few minutes, and they stood around and talked or something, and then after a number of minutes of the officer going back to his car, probably checking driver's license, et cetera, he made sure the other guy got in the right side of the road, and they both went on their way. He ended up going back in the direction of, I'll say, Little Washington, and I actually saw his car on the side of the road, and so, I went down to the next turnaround and came back and thanked him very much. I'm hoping that more of these signs, more things help us not have people driving on the wrong side of the road. It was quite a thing to see, and I'm glad it worked out. We were fortunate. Second, I got a lovely little brochure in the mail from Laurel Ridge about their trade programs and such. It's beautiful, it's wonderful. I think you ought to get a representative from Laurel Ridge to come here and speak about all the wonderful projects that are going on there, not just what's going on right now, but what's coming up, which really impressed me, that there's lots of new things there, and it just looks like some wonderful programs at Laurel Ridge Community College, and as a product of Community College from Nova, I'm very glad to see how wonderful the programs are in the community college system. And lastly, we saw those wonderful charts that you all have, including the one about real estate taxes. I pay mine monthly, so that it's not such a hit at the end of the year. I'm glad Rappahannock does this. I think they need to advertise it more, because the average person can probably handle it better during the course of a year. The other thing, in Fairfax, they split it half a year, half a year, if you want to do that, and we don't have that kind of option, but I can see that is another way of evening off things for everybody, including the county. So, anyway, just see if you can push at least the monthly payment type of style, may help a lot of people, and help the county. Thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Anita.
Thank you.
Laura Grigsby from the Hampton District.
Laura Grigsby, Hampton District, echo. I've been attending the meetings now since last fall, and I've learned a whole lot. I actually found the contractor yard conversation over the months interesting, even though I don't ever intend to have a contractor's yard. What I do have an intense interest in, and pretty much everybody here knows this, is that we have property on Long Mountain Road, which is a gravel road. And this morning, and Ms. Smith has addressed it a couple of times, Mr. Nesbitt got into, and I'm not sure if I pronounced his name correctly, I apologize, got into that there are county maintenances, plans, and there's rustic road plans and all those kind of things. What can I, as a private citizen, do to assist? I mean, we have property on Ridgeview Road, we have agreements, even though it's not an organized situation. For years, Floyd has just taken care of that road and done things on it that needed to be, but we're doing it in a more organized fashion now, and that is a private road. But on some places, like Long Mountain Road, which consistently gets washed out and has problems, and we have a UPS driver who does forty miles an hour on the road, straight up the hill, causing irreparable damage every time he comes through daily, not just standing here and complaining about it, what can actually be put in place and activate it so that we can have a better partnership about the gravel roads if we're not going to pave them? Because I'll be dead and gone before Long Mountain Road is ever paved, and I still have to drive it every day.
Thank you. Great, anyone, anyone else? Karen Hunt from the Jackson District.
I don't have any prepared remarks, but earlier today at your two o'clock session, you discussed the possibility of looking into a residential lighting ordinance, and I'd like to commend you for recognizing that that is likely a good thing, and remembering something that Supervisor Carney said at the last meeting, which is that technology has changed a lot, and that now, you know, you can get these little tiny lights with LEDs that are just like electric, like bright, and I think, I think that's a good thing to look into. I know that you'll get some pushback, I know a lot of people like their lights, and they
I'll leave you with that comes to mind was from several years ago, when I think the idea of just discussing the idea of lighting ordinance packed this room, and there was a lot of hesitation, and Jim Manwaring stood up and said, you know, my neighbor has a light that he put up years ago that basically shines in my bedroom window, and I, you know, didn't say anything, and, you know, he has a right to have his light, but it took, I forget, he said, three or four years for the bushes that he planted on that side of the house to grow tall enough to give them some, you know, compensation, I guess, from that. And I just, I think it's important because some people, you can approach and say, hey, would you mind, like, tweaking that? And they'll go, oh, yeah, I didn't know. But there are other people who, on principle, will do the exact opposite. And so I think having some general idea to address that, and certainly if you're going to be replacing a light, which a lot of those other ordinance seem to say is, okay, you know, if you have an existing light, fine, but if you go to do anything other than regular maintenance, ballast replacement, et cetera, if it's a new fixture, that's when things kick in. I think that'd be a good idea. Thanks.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Anyone else? Yeah, Ron McLa, Jackson District.
Ron McLa, Jackson District. I just want to clear up some confusion from the budget hearing that was on the last April, the end of April, involving what I was talking about with the compensation on Amosville and Chester Gap. And Mr. Whitson, when I was done, made a comment about, basically, the key word is mutual aid, and that it's not a cut-and-dried situation. Well, I wasn't talking about mutual aid, because mutual aid is entirely different from what I was talking about. And so I just wanted to set the record straight. And just so you know, because there were 582 calls out of the county last year for Rappahannock Volunteer Fire Companies. I got with the dispatcher and the sheriff, and mutual aid is mutual aid. It goes both ways. They said, they couldn't give me an exact count, but they said maybe 15 to 20, and that's it. So we are paying to send, use our tax dollars to send our volunteer fire companies into other counties 500 times, and our repayment is maybe 15 to 20. That's what I'm talking about. It's not right, and it's costing us a lot of money, and we've got to face the issue. You put another penny on the fire tax, but it doesn't need to be there. And that's $200,000. That's, you know, we want to pay, you know, we want to have adequate service, but we don't need that penny on there because we've got to cut back on these out-of-county calls, or not. We can't cut back on the calls. They may be actually being cut back on, but that's another story. But we can't pay 100% of the operating costs for fire companies that are responding 40 or 60% into other counties. Just makes, does not make financial sense, and you guys have got to talk about it. And it hasn't been talked about, and it's frustrating because it's real. So please have a discussion on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Anyone else? Okay, anyone, anyone who's dialed into the meeting want to say anything? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public comment period. Thanks, everyone, for your thoughtful comments on many different fronts. Okay, we're going to move on into old business, and there is a, there is an agenda item related to our ongoing budget discussions. The contemplated action here, to be clear with my colleagues, is we have on Thursday night a standalone budget and tax rate hearing at the elementary school, so keep that in mind. And then there's a typographic error in the recommended action here. Basically, I think what I would like is for someone to put forward a motion to schedule a May 12th work session.
So the May 12th and 14th work sessions are already scheduled?
Okay, then we'll just cancel.
Yeah.
It would be a motion to cancel May 14.
I'll make a motion to cancel the May 12th and May 14th.
May 14th.
May 12th, the school representatives plan to...
That's a typo. We want to keep May 12th on the books. So you, we, basically, the motion is to cancel May 14th.
The school reps have said they will make themselves available to have dialogue with the board on the 12th. But the 14th, I think, is not needed, and you'll be otherwise meeting in the courthouse that night.
Is there any reason we can't cancel the 14th on the 12th?
It's my, it would be helpful, you are meeting on the 14th with Glavine Homes and the Planning Oversight Committee to talk about the courthouse before this work session. However, if this work session doesn't happen, that meeting on the courthouse could slide later into the night. So...
Or could just slide.
The next agenda, well, the next agenda item is for that.
So basically, it seems like May 12th is an important date that we want to keep on the books.
For sure.
May 14th, at least with respect to the budget, is probably duplicative, even though, recognize, Mr. Carney can't be there, which is a bummer, on the 12th.
Definitely can't have you on the 12th.
Yeah.
And then you will be, you need to add a meeting on the 15th, which is the last day you can adopt a school board budget, which is also seven days after the public hearing on the 8th, which is the first date that you could approve a budget.
And the 15th is not already on our standing budget calendar?
It is not. So all the 14th are on your schedule, the 15th is not.
So it's going to, what we're seeking, yeah, thank you for walking me through that. So what we're seeking, then, is a motion to cancel the work session currently scheduled for May 14th, which will free up space for a potentially expanded courthouse discussion. And I don't care if it's a single motion or two separate ones, but the other part would be scheduling a May 15th budget work session, which would be used for budget adoption purposes to meet the, I guess it's the statutory, yeah, it's a statutory requirement for adoption of the school budget. So that's cancel the 14th, add the 15th.
I'll make a motion to cancel the May 14th 2025 budget work session and add a budget work session to be held at 7:00 PM on May 15th at the courthouse, County Courthouse.
That's great. Thanks. The second of Mr. Carney's motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion?
I understand the emphasis for why we're canceling, but I just think that we might need more time to talk about things.
So you mean just leave it on the 14th?
It is currently scheduled for 7:00 PM on the 14th.
What time does a courthouse discussion start?
You'll decide that in the next agenda item, but probably 5:00 or 5:30 to have enough time.
I'm fine leaving it on the 14th if you guys want to.
And I guess my only question there, and I just want to make sure that we're not running afoul of any FOIA requirements, but if we, I believe we're safe, so if we advertise, if we advertise a 7:00 work session on the budget, and that work session doesn't commence until later than the time advertised, we have not in any way shortchanged the public. It would only be if we were to start early.
Correct. Those interested in hearing a conversation at 7:00 will have shown up.
Okay.
Be subject to hearing about courthouse for however many minutes, and then you would go into...
That's fine. Mr. Carney, you want to retract your motion, and your second, you'll retract that?
I will retract my motion, and I'll just move to add, I'll make a motion to add a budget work session to be held at 7:00 PM on May 15th.
Okay.
At the county courthouse.
Ms. Comer, and that, the effect of this motion is to keep the 12th and the 14th intact, and adding the 15th?
Second that.
Okay, great. Thanks. Any further discussion?
Thank you. I just have never had a budget year like this, and I'm reluctant to cancel any time that we may need.
Point well taken. Thank you. Yeah. Great. Any further discussion? Ms. Donahue, anything? You okay with that?
No, but we're screaming.
You know, stockpile that rest and relaxation, because you got a lot of work out of you. All right, great. I appreciate everyone working through that, and boy, isn't that fun, watching local government in action. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. All right, so related to, related to those dates, we do need a motion to lock in the meeting with Glavine Homes and the courthouse Planning Oversight Committee, and we need to set a time, although you've already thrown out some possible times.
I think.
5:00 PM?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And I hope that the judges and clerks and other interested parties are available, and I'm guessing that we don't have any way of determining that.
I've already forecasted, we forecasted the date to everybody, and that, you know, 5:00, 5:30, but could slide later, depending on the action you just took. So it will not slide later. It'll be, so...
Okay, I see.
It's an appetite for how early do you want to go?
Yeah, I got it.
To, you know, make it harder for people to get here versus crunching up against...
Is 6:00 too late?
Probably too late, I think.
So they intend to share the updated concept, which is smaller, and updated financial...
See you, Bonnie.
Thanks. Costs and all that stuff.
5:30.
5:30.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to add a meeting to review the revised courthouse concept with the courthouse planning and oversight committee at 5:30 PM on May 14th, excuse me, 2025 at the County Courthouse. Great. Is there a second for Mr. Carney's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, well, they, they, they'll get that concept to us well before 5:30.
My direction to them was that I want it by the close of business on Wednesday, this week, so it can be posted to board docs.
Yeah, because to Ms. Smith's point, we'll need every single minute of that day, and it will just be unacceptable for them to send it to us. I mean, really, any later than Wednesday this week.
Yeah, the floor plan and stuff is done, because they presented it to the POC a little while ago. It's just the other cost estimate stuff that I haven't seen yet, so...
Right. Okay.
I have to say, most people that I talk to are really concerned about this design and the cost and the timing. I mean, may as well be frank about it. By this time this thing comes to fruition, Mr. Carney and I will have cycled off the board, and it's tough to move forward with three. I mean, you're hoping that whomever fills these seats after us is of a like mind, and one person doesn't peel off from what's agreed upon. And having, having been through this process once before, to the tune of $100,000 worth of planning, and seeing it sort of laid to waste in an election cycle, now we're another $200,000 into planning. I would hate to see a similar result, because I understand how important this courthouse is. I do. I have a cousin who works in child services, and, you know, the blasé way that people talk about security being adequate, especially when it's custody, or some of the really heightened family situations, things can go south very quickly. So it is critical to do the work. Equally critical is the timing. And unfortunately, I also see that this courthouse discussion is being brought in to the schools' discussion and comparisons for increases in annual school spending somehow being compared to long-term courthouse planning, which is, which is really unfortunate and not fair to either of those processes. So I, I have felt this way for some time with the heightened atmosphere of this budget cycle. I don't think any good can come of trying to do this planning now, and I, I would urge my fellow board members to take a pause for a few months. We can always take it back up at any time, but this budget cycle has really taken a toll on this courthouse discussion.
Okay. Any other discussion?
All I would say is that, I guess this is a second time I'll try not to beat a dead horse, but the, no doubt that the latest design is, on a scale that fiscally is unacceptable and a nonstarter. And so I think that what we're expecting to hear on the 15th is how it can be scaled back, and I think that is a responsible incremental step toward getting the project off the ground. I agree with you. And I said during the last budget hearing on the school that to conflate courthouse spending with school funding is not productive. It's not one or the other. It's, they both have to be looked at in isolation to some extent because they're completely different problems and challenges. We have gotten a point with really valuable input from our judges and clerks and others, and then also the committee, Mr. Henry and others sat on early on to select architectural firm. We've done a lot to get to a point where, and this is no offense to you and the building committee in the past, but unfortunately, for whatever reason, that design did not, at least as a concept, did not land well. And I think this one generally has, at least from an aesthetics perspective. So now we can see whether the aesthetics of the building, which most people seem comfortable with, can be retained while it's scaled back, and I think that's what we should be doing. And I think that the way I look at it is, this is precisely the time to be having these discussions because we're on high alert about spending and taxation. And I think if we were having the courthouse discussion in June or July, maybe, maybe we wouldn't be tuned into the real fiscal pressure we potentially could be putting on our taxpayers. So my view is that we proceed, and any discussion later about whether to execute a final agreement and start the project, that decision can be made separately. But I think what we're going to hear is, what's the, what would a scaled-down building look like, and what would it likely cost at today's, you know, per square foot cost, which obviously are moving target. So I think we should proceed for now.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, I'd take both your sentiments absolutely heart, and I think that we're at a pretty good juncture right now with completing this phase of the project, and I feel like we were kind of all on board with, hey, this is too big, we need to scale this back, and I'm really excited to see what they're going to bring forward. I think, though, that given the state of, that we're in a trade war right now, I think it makes me very nervous to proceed past this, and I don't feel like we need to make any decisions about proceeding past this. So in my mind, I'm just like, we should have this meeting, we need to see what they've got, we need to kind of do that. And to your point, I don't know how long this is going to take, and so you and I might not be here when people, when really critical decisions need to be made. I can tell you that if, if in two months we're still in the same spot that we are now, I mean, I think it would be foolish to lock ourselves into any decision-making pattern, given just what's going on with the price of who knows what. But this is a really good step towards defining the scope of our county needs for doing exactly what you just said, which is, this courthouse is woefully inadequate when it comes to safety, and we have to protect our own, and we have to move forward and do that. I think what the public doesn't understand is that every two and a half years, we transfer to the schools the amount of money it would cost to build a courthouse, and we will figure out, and we have to figure out how to do that as a county, and it will cost money. I know people keep saying that. I keep saying that, but I just want people to be open and have their eyes open about it, and we need to do it. I think the really critical part, and I think we're getting there, is how do we build something that's just not too big? And I'm not sure we're there yet, but I feel like we're getting there.
Yeah.
So I want to at least see this part of the project. I want to bring it to a spot that we can at least say, okay, it's naturally at the next point to then go on, and then we can make that decision.
Great.
For me.
Ms. Comer?
Yeah, I agree with everything, all of you. Yeah, I agree with everything all of you said. And the big, Mr. Carney just hit the nail on the head. It's a very natural stopping point on the fifteenth, what is it, the fifteenth, the fourteenth? So I don't, I don't want to not have them on the fourteenth. I want to, I want to see what they've done. They listen to us all.
And we're not going to have any extra provisions for parking? Because I mean, I think since we met, Mr. Noyes has announced he's opening a restaurant across the street. Call me crazy, but I think that kid's going to make it. I think he's going to do very well. And people are going to come from all over the place to eat there. And, and we're going to have board supervisors, courts in session, popular restaurant across the street, and only on-street parking for people attending all of those things.
Yeah, so I would just say the concept is mostly about the building. And so you can add parking to the project during design development schematic, even probably in construction. If that's what the board wants to do.
Right.
The earlier concepts from Wiley Wilson included a whole bunch of off-street parking on the four acres.
Right.
Easy to add that on kind of at any time.
Yeah.
So, but that would be important direction to an architectural firm. When you receive a concept, you see it and you say, gee, I'm really, I like, love the building. Great job shrinking it, even though you didn't tell them to shrink it very much. Manage expectations here.
Yeah.
That was your direction. I really have the building. I'm very concerned about the pressure on the on-street parking. So please bring me some options on off-street parking.
And not park a garage.
Well, I mean... The problem, one of the, the nice thing about our sloping lot is that it has the walkout basement, you know, opportunity. The bad thing is sloping lots don't work great for parking unless you build a bunch of retaining walls.
Right.
Which aren't free. But it's all doable. That's why they make civil engineers.
Wow, that's true.
Great.
Aren't you one of them?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, come back to the start, Gary.
Debbie Donahue, do you have anything to add? We're, believe it or not, we're actually just trying to schedule a meeting. That's all this is about.
I think that all of you are spot on. This is really, we need to go forward to at least see what the downsides option is. At least on this go-around, and it doesn't hurt us to have this meeting, see what Glavine Homes have come up with. And then we can decide at what point, and then what timing we want to move forward if that's the vote of the board.
Great. Thank you very much, and thanks again for hanging in there all day. Okay, there's a motion and a second. And I'll just, I'll call for a vote. This is to set the courthouse meeting on the fourteenth at five-thirty PM at the courthouse. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
You voted in the term.
I did, yeah. And I appreciate all the thoughtful comments. All right, we've got one more item tonight under new business. And this, believe it or not, is going to be like Back to the Future.
I love it.
Yeah, this is the CWS application for the cellphone tower in Scrabble, which takes us all the way back to basically the start of the pandemic in 2020, if I'm not mistaken. And that...
Just before we knew it was coming.
Yep, before we knew it was coming. And because of the pandemic and because of state code regarding the duration of cellular permits, et cetera, here we are now in 2025. And basically, time's run out and under our zoning ordinance, you can ask for an extension, and that's what's being requested here, right?
Yes, this is similar to the extension you entertained a few months ago for a special exception. It's the time before which work must commence on the special exception. This personal wireless service facility is a type of special exception. As you noted, in pertinent part, the state code deemed that any special exception site plan, several other things that were valid just before the pandemic, remain valid through July one, 2025. So July one, July one, 2025 is coming up, and CWS knows that. They have, they still think they have a shot at building this tower. And they're asking for a two-year extension, which is via the letter attached here.
Okay.
The board can provide that two-year extension, a one-year extension, whatever you want to do.
All right.
I'll make a motion for a discussion. I'll make a motion to extend validity of PWSFU nineteen oh eight oh two for a period of two years.
Yep, and that nineteen means 2019, believe it or not.
That's when they applied.
Yeah.
In August of nineteen.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion?
I know that people really are of a different mind these days, and they would like cell coverage now. Whether these people can figure this out or not, this is the million-dollar question. So instead of giving them one year and having them back asking the same thing, I'm okay with them trying to figure out if they can do this.
They submitted their letter, and it didn't include any duration time. And I said, how about you write how long you want to extend? And they revised it to, say, two years.
Okay.
I mean, given that what they're providing, I just hear from constituents that they're just, that they would prefer to have it.
Yeah.
And that's a pretty critical area down there.
It's done really well with this Berryville Tower. Well, they've got one spot left on it.
Once they got it painted, right?
Yeah, of course, they've sold it now to SBA. We're still trying to get AT&amp;T on that tower.
Yeah, it's done very well.
Yuma Green. Yuma Green is the call.
Which is brown. Pretty brown.
But you can't see it now. I mean, it is.
It's disappeared.
You can see it, you know, when there's no leaves on the trees.
Okay, any further discussion on this extension request on the SE?
I don't see a downfall to the extension.
It's very encouraging. It's one of the few places that I don't get cell service in the county, is that section.
On your way to work.
On my way to work, I time out for about five, six minutes. And I'm like, man, I wish they had built that tower.
Particularly on our primary road system.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, and I've talked to, yeah, exactly. We have had accidents in that area, and it's a dark zone. There's no, there's no...
Debbie, do you have anything you want to add?
I would just say we voted to allow them to build the tower in the first place. And if they need a little bit of an extension to get its coverage in that area, I'm all for it.
Great, thanks. Motion and a second are out on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. That was a two-year extension, Gary, just to be clear.
Did you vote for that, Gary?
I did.
You voted against it the first time.
I know. I mean, a lot's happened since then. Amazingly, I remember how I voted. Shocked you remember that.
It was a very interesting meeting because Mr. Frazier was very ill. And so it was just four of us.
Yeah, anyway, I did.
I couldn't remember why, but okay.
I got over it. I got, I got outvoted, so I might as well go along with the crowd now. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Yeah.
Thank you, Debbie. Eight twenty-one.
Have a good trip, Debbie.
Thanks for talking out.
See you in a week or so.
Thanks, Dave.
Laura.